For our Finance Committee meeting, excuse me. We have one member who is running a little bit late to be in person. So we're just going to start the meeting as an information session. Still have it on Facebook Live so we can get all the information out and the public can see that. And then I'll call the meeting to full order probably once the other member arrives and we're all in person. But right now, we have Counselor Whitfield on Zoom and Counselor Russell, myself, are here in person. So we have three of us here, and I think we can begin the meeting and get the information moving. So with that, I know Tyler, you had some presentation that to go along with the budget tonight that you wanted to go over with us. So I'm just going to hand the meeting over to you. It looks like you got it all queued up for on the screen, so please go ahead. And then if, as we have questions, Counselor Whitfield, I wouldn't be able to see you because he has the budget on the screen, but as you, as if you have questions, feel free to just chime in, and we'll pause any into those for you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Counselor Whitfield, can you see the PowerPoint?
Unfortunately, no, I do not see a PowerPoint.
But I said something before I started talking.
I'm glad you did too, Tyler. Thank you.
I'm not the host, so I can't share my screen.
Counselor Whit, you might be able to see it from the Facebook Live video as it's being, there'd be a little bit of a lag, but you might be able to see it there.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, look at that. Getting through the technical difficulty. So I'm going to start with just kind of a high-level overview. I do want to talk just current year highlights real briefly, and that's more for you all just to have that information moving forward, and that is in the budget book. So if everyone has their proposed book with them, there are tabs that you can follow along, and I'll reference those as well. Okay, I just want to quickly go through these highlights. As most of you know, actually, everyone here knows, we had the Fire Station 38 demolition and has begun on the new construction. That is a major highlight for this year. The Lee Road pickleball courts have now been open to the public. If you've been driving by Lee Road, you've seen that those have been a pretty major success for us, and it's been great to see. If you look on the bottom right here, you can see the page numbers. So if at any point you want to see where we're at in the book itself, that's a great reference point for you. I'll get through these pretty quickly. So we have started the redevelopment on the Civic Plaza. Most of you are at the groundbreaking for the library. It's been great as well. And one of the great things we've done lately has been expanding our Fort Bend Farmers Market. So if you don't know, that is over at the Cultural Campus at Host and?
Otis.
Host and Otis. Let's get through these. Okay, then here's a great milestone for our Streets Department. They've done a great job this year. They have swept at the making of this 260 miles in the city. That's pretty outstanding, so we appreciate that hard work from our Streets Department. I'm going to get right into the summary, so this is going to be easier for me to flip through here. So with this 2023 proposed budget in our general fund.
Tyler, real quick, can you let people know where the budget book is on the website in case somebody wanted to click on the PDF?
So for anyone out there wanting to see it on our website, you can go to cityoflawrence.org/financial, and that will take you right to, well, that takes you to all of our financials. The first one there is the 23 proposal.
Thank you.
So with this budget, we are maintaining our 20% operating reserves in our general fund. This will be our fifth consecutive year. We are very pleased to be able to say that we've done that yet again. With that, the proposal has us ending at 6.2 million, which is quite a bit above our roughly $5 million target. And then a quick breakdown here, so this is on page 45 for you. You can see where our general fund revenue sources are. This is just a quick breakdown that shows you really for us that we really rely on our property taxes with 43% of our revenues coming from that source, as well as our local income taxes. And we'll talk more about our low it and co it as we get into the fund financial section. Breaking down the uses, just to highlight this, again, on page 46, public safety as a whole, that's police, fire, and communications. They make up 77% of the general fund proposal. So they are a significant area of our spending, and it kind of shows our commitment to public safety moving forward. Everyone else, you can see the individual breakdown by department there under the other services. And I'll just quickly get to this. At the, at the bottom of this page on 47, you can just see the total, make sure this is, I'm not missing a page. Okay, so you can see the total change. The general fund budget that's highlighted there at 25.3 million, and you can see all the other operating funds, and you can see the differences obviously from '22 to '23. In total, we have reduced our budget this, with this proposal, by 2.2 million. And so really, that's specifically in the general fund where you see a 1.4 reduction. So with this budget, it's not anything flashy. I won't, you know, sugarcoat it. We're not doing anything major next year. We're not looking to spend down any operating reserves. We're just looking to maintain our current operations and city services. So this one is for anyone who, we're going to the fund financial section on page 54. I'm going to talk about four operating funds. Really, we'll talk about five, but four that are really connected. I'll wait for you to. So if you attended the budget workshops, this is not new news to you, but when it comes to the general fund, our Public Safety Tax Fund, the EMS Fund, and the Capital Improvement Fund, they're pretty related in how things flow between them. So in the general fund here, most of the debt service in this fund is going to be coming from the Public Safety Tax Fund. So what we've kind of done historically is almost a shuffling game of who can, who can afford it in which year. So in this case, Public Safety Tax Fund has significant funding challenges, as we've talked about in our workshops. And so we've shifted all of that debt out of that fund and moved it to the general fund with parts of that being in the Capital Improvement Fund. And then on the EMS Fund, which I'm going to flip to here, we have put debt back into that fund. We took it out for a few years, so you'll see what, what that did. But here's just, just to look at the general fund with that debt moving back over, we are having a, actually worked out with updated revenue numbers that we have a net revenue, and this one's old. It's actually $18,000. Nothing flashy there, but that's kind of how we've, we've landed with the general fund proposal. Now, in the Public Safety Tax Fund, in your book, you'll see this financial spreadsheet on page 58, but with our updates from our Marion County income tax estimates, we are actually projecting a net positive of, I wrote it down here. Memorize this one, of roughly $12,000. So this budget is pretty bare bones. You can see the debt service that was taken out. There's no capital coming out of that fund. We're really trying to maintain that fund as much as possible. This is a significant pain source for us, given that we don't have control over that income tax rate. This is where we're going to see our funding challenges continually moving forward. You can see our net revenue for the last four years hasn't been great, obviously, so we've continued to use those cash reserves, and this is a year that luckily we have brought it into balance, but it is one that will continue to be a problem for us.
Can you, not to slow you down, can you enter and let us know, where does the tax actually come from, and what was the adjustment that you received? You said it, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
The income tax here is the Marion County Public Safety Income Tax. That's levied at the county level, so that's the, the revenue line for Public Safety Tax there. What we have seen is that the 3.6 million I had in there is really 3.7. 3,684,929 was what was in this at the time with Marion County releasing its estimates for next year. It actually looks like we'll have roughly $3,764,232 coming in. So it brought us into balance. We were going to look at using some of the cash reserves initially, but things came in better than expected, so that's nice, although long-term wise, we still have that funding challenge.
Thank you.
I have these, I'm going to flip past Capital Improvement and move over to EMS. So on page 61, you can see the EMS Fund. When you look at the 2021 actuals, so we ran a net positive of 353,000, and then right now, we are currently projecting pretty much almost the same net revenue. So what that's done is it's allowed us to take, when you look at 2020's ending cash of 657,000, it's pushed us back up to where we're projecting this year to end at 1.3. So we've essentially pushed that debt service into the general fund and the Capital Improvement Fund for a few years and allowed that fund to kind of recoup its, its losses. But we will be moving debt service back into this fund for '23, which will use some of those reserves, and it pushes back down to 993,000 roughly, and which is still well above our 20% target even in this fund. The good thing about this is as, as everything stands right now at '24, the debt that's falling off will put us back into a balanced position. So that's, that's the good news there. Still a funding challenge for us moving forward. Our EMS fees are, I mean, you can see they're relatively flat, so it is going to continue to be a pain source for us, but this is one of the things you're going to see us do is consistently shifting who can handle the debt at the time because we have so many capital needs. Luckily, at this point in time, we've caught up, but we will continue to have to replace existing vehicles, so still a funding challenge for us.
So the, the debt service is on vehicles mainly that?
Yes.
For this line? Okay. And that's, is that just EMS, the ambulances, or is that all of, all of the emergency services? Like fire, police?
Oh, no, this would be ambulances.
Just ambulances, okay.
So then in the Capital Improvement Funds, I'm kind of jumping back on what I had here. It's page 60. This is one that's in, in balance right now. It does have an increase in the debt service, and that's again just a shuffling around. That falls down to roughly 350-ish thousand in '24. So we've got an opportunity next year to get some other capital needs taken care of. The good thing is that ending fund balance at 750,000 is a solid cash reserve there, and that will basically have another kind of reserve for us to tap into if we need to. So that, I like to see that how funded that particular fund is. I mean, if you were looking at 20%, we're well above it. That's, I mean, 100% reserves, you could say. So that's our Capital Improvement Fund. Those are the four funds that we kind of have this shifting game with the Public Safety Debt Service. But with this proposal, we're in a good place. We just do need to keep in mind our long-term funding challenges, and specifically EMS, but the one that, you know, would keep me up at night is the Public Safety Tax. And without that tax rate being increased, and I sound like a broken record, but it's going to be a problem for us. It's going to be a pain point, so something to keep in mind moving forward. And at any point, if any council member wants to loop me into a conversation with someone at the county level, I'd always be happy to speak with anyone on this issue. And the last major fund, I call them major funds because they're the primary operating sources, just our MVH Fund. So if you take a look at that one on page 55, you'll see that in 2021, so we, we kind of roped things back in, and we got, we got to see our gas tax start to rebound. We did generate a slight, I wouldn't say slight, $260,000 net revenue, but we are projecting to be actual slight net revenue for '22. Now, in '23, we are looking to spend down some of the reserves or fund balance in that fund. So what that is, is I believe in 2018, the gas tax was changed to where 50% goes to your general fund, or not your general fund, sorry, MVH unreserved, and then 50% goes into general, or MVH reserved. You can only use the reserve funds on preventive maintenance. You can pave, strip patching, crack sealing, those types of things. So in this instance, what we're trying to do is use some of those reserve funds that they can only be used on that. So you'll hear more about those when we get into the departmental sections, but even at that 1.7 ending, and again, you, it's a pretty conservative budget, so that's still a worst-case scenario. We're ending with some significant cash reserves in that fund. And this, this would be a point where I would note that, given the Baker Tilly Report, we had looked at and are currently in the process of getting everything in line to implement the wheel tax. So that would bring in, you wouldn't see that until '24, but would bring in an additional $1 million in revenue. That's a significant revenue source that could be coming our way, so we are working on that between self, our city attorney, and our city engineer here. So we will update you on that as we get kind of further along the process, but again, best-case scenario, that revenue wouldn't hit us until 2024, so just something to keep in mind there. That's going to be it for kind of the high-level overview. Given that those funds seem to be the primary area, I'll pause for questions on those at the high level, and then we can jump right into the departments.
Well, just starting with, well, thank you for this information. I really appreciate the, the overview. Just starting with the, where you were at right there, so can you go into a little, well, I guess you went into with details, so you all have been exploring already the municipal wheel tax?
Correct.
And, and what it would take to?
Yes, you have to, we always have an asset management plan. What you have to get approved is a transportation plan. We've recently found out, we, we were under the impression those are two different things. They kind of are, but one, but our asset management plan, correct me if I'm wrong, Shree, can stand in the place of a transportation management plan. So as long as the, is it NDOT? Yeah, as long as NDOT approves that plan for transportation, as a transportation management plan, then we can bring the wheel tax ordinance to you all. Once that's all done, we'll send it to the BMV. But again, best, even given the timing and how it would all kick in, you wouldn't see the revenue until '24. We would have to do this like six months ago if we wanted to see it next year.
Any other questions? Counselor Whitfield, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Chairman. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I, like I said, I couldn't see you, so I just wanted to make sure I got you there. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll jump right into the departments. Okay, so in this one, I'm going to go a little, originally, I wanted to go right in order. If you look at page 69, all the departments are listed in there in order by their actual departmental numbers, but I'm going to do, what do I got here? I'm going to cover the mayors, legals, myself, HR, and then we'll stop at the council. Then we'll go to public safety and just do everyone as a group. DPW and Streets kind of as a group, then IT, and we'll wrap up with Parks. Save the best for last. So really.
Tyler, do you mind if I interrupt you just one second and skip back? I thought of a question I wanted to ask you, but I got off of my notes. It's about the revenue. Would you prefer I ask it here, or can I go ahead and ask it now without interrupting your presentation? Great. So if we look back at the budget, your very first slide on the, the revenue, one of the concerns we had, I think, in '21 and going into '22 was the impact of COVID. Do you think we saw, it looks like the, the income has actually stayed flat or gone up, so do you feel there's been any, do we anticipate any more impact from COVID or on the, the property taxes or income tax level?
I'm not anticipating on the property tax side. On the income tax, seeing the Marion County, or sorry, not supplemental, but seeing the Marion County estimates going, trending positively, to me, highlights that we're out of it. Now, as Fed doesn't go crazy with it and we don't end up in a massive recession, we're fine, but as things stand right now, we're trending positively, so it's a good note. I mean, yeah, so it looks like we're rebounding. Definitely a good sign.
Okay. I just want to make sure we, we address that because that was a concern that full council had. I think sometime in '20 and '21, was the impact of COVID on our, our revenues?
Yeah, the two taxes that you would see that impact would be the income tax and then the gas tax. And we did see the gas tax with the Street Department in 2020, and then it kind of rebounded in '21, and we are seeing a pretty, called a full recovery here in '22. But again, if things keep going the way they are and prices keep rising, it's not guaranteed, so that's why I went a little conservative on the gas tax piece of it, but with the income tax, I just pulled right from Marion County. So, yeah, great question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go to Mayor's Budget. So in every department's budget, what we've always done in the, in the adopted book is put in our list of accomplishments and goals, but I wanted to make sure we got that into the proposal so you can kind of see, almost a checklist of what we've done and what we're planning on doing. So if you look at the mayor's on page 71, just has the highlights. So we are looking at continuing to expand our marketing of city events, so primarily the major mayor's budget is really marketing the city, and that really includes our sponsorship. So those are kind of the two areas that most of spending can happen, and the mayor's budget is just marketing and sponsoring events. Some of these other ones actually apply to other departments. So when you look at some of the objectives for Stormwater, you'll see that when we get to Shree's budget, applying for and receiving the next level Trails Grant. So every year, we want to start to apply for that. Anytime we can get grant money, we're going to do so. I hate to be quick, but that's kind of the highlight of, of his objectives and his, in his budget at least. Now, what I don't have on the screen, but what you all have in front of you is the next three pages is the breakdown of the budget. So from here, I can kind of go through, I mean, I can go through it, but really, I could just stop here for questions if you've already got some lined up for me. I mean, the majority of this spending is marketing and sponsorship, so pretty, I've trimmed out a lot of things out of here. The billboards come out of, out of the mayor's budget. So again, all of our marketing, most of all of the marketing comes out of here. Questions? Move on.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Legals budget, so this is out of the Admin Services Fund. So one of the things I did, I should have paused, is with this new structure of this proposed book, it's a little bit different. So I actually did a fund financial section, so you can just see all the financials really quick, and then grouped everything by departments. So when you see a department with multiple funds, you're going to see that listed in their table of contents. So when fire comes up here, they won't have to talk about the general fund when we get to them, and then come back up 15 minutes later and talk about EMS. I want everyone to be able to talk about their budget as a whole, and it makes it a little bit easier, I think, for you to, to read because you can just go to a department. So in this instance, we'll just go to legals. Really nothing. So in the, in the budget, in the general fund, we are balanced with, in maintaining our 20% reserves, but we have budget for 5% raises in the general, or in all of our operating funds. That's really the only thing in legal that we've done, is put in the raises, and I believe it's flat, so that's really the only change. That's just a legal budget. Pay for legal things.
That's just for legal purposes, that one is? Okay.
Yeah, there's now a couple reductions in a couple of spots that we could, and then let everything else flat. And then we get to mine, so some of these are out of my control, like an audit, but we have yet to be audited this year. We haven't heard from SBOA. Usually around this time, they, yeah, they're going to be calling me tomorrow now. But normally around this time, we, we start the audit. It's usually actually a month or two ago, and we have yet to hear from them. But one of our goals is obviously to continue to be audited and reduce our findings. Last year, we had one, come a long way from 2015 when we had like 19, so we're trying to get that down to zero, although SBOA always likes to find something. And we will again be applying for the GFOA award. We are looking to do a lot more internal things, coordinating with our HR department to build out an internal employee site. And one of the things we didn't get this year, but we will look at it again next year, is apply for the levy appeal. Fortunately, we didn't get it this year, but hopefully next year goes in our favor. When you do go through this, so I'm not going to read the rest of those objectives, but when you go through the Controller's Budget, what you'll notice is the first three pages of the general fund. I don't have a general fund budget anymore. I've zeroed that out this year. The only thing really in there that I moved was the energy savings debt. That got moved to my actual admin services budget. To me, that makes sense because everyone pays into the internal service fund, and since all that work was done throughout the city, that seems to be a more appropriate place to put it. So that's really the only shift. So if you look at my budget, there's a slight increase. It would have been in that fund, I mean, would have been a decrease of about 200 and something thousand, but with that debt moving in of 377,000, that kind of bumped me up a little bit. That's it for me. Nothing major. I do have money in there that I've moved from, out of general consulting and made sure I put that in the financial consulting. We've talked about in that, in the budget workshops, but that was kind of catching really financial consulting, so I've just made that move.
So what, what was the debt service that was in your budget that you moved over?
Out of, in the general fund, in my budget, but in the general fund, there was 377,000 that I was able to then just move out of mine and put it in the, well, so I keep saying that. I had two budgets really from two different funds. The general fund was paying for the energy savings, and so I just took it out of that spot and put it over a different one. Yeah. Let me make sure I have that one in order here. Oh, HR. Okay, is it, well, I'll pause right there. Any questions or?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, Councilor.
You have a, you have an other line that's funded at, I think it's at 81,000 maybe this year? I'm just curious what was in that.
Which account number?
It's on page 91, or does it zero itself out?
91.
It's 431.
Oh, yeah, that's zeroed out.
Yeah, zeroed itself out, okay.
I took, yeah, everything, so right now, you're looking at my budget and the general fund. I took everything out of there. Yeah, I reduced my general fund budget next year by 770,000. I just took that all out.
Then his budget starts on page 93, where it's at for '23.
There is, I mean, to your point, there is another account with 82,000 in there in my, in, on page 94. That's the cleaning contract for the building.
Okay.
Yeah. Good, good point. Good note there.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, ready.
I'll do HR real quick. So the HR budget starts on page 144. I'm sorry, you got to jump around a little bit. So with this, so HR was always in the Controller's Office. We've split into two separate departments. There's two employees in there, and really, that budget, it's just the salaries. So since we're in the same location still, we've left everything else in the Controller's Budget, supplies, and even any service charges, education, things that might be needed. So most of the objectives are all internal goals that we can do in-house. So the list there is on page 145. We do want to look at, I know one of her main goals is to increase employee engagement opportunities, so we've done that through our Employee Appreciation Lunch, which has been successful. We would like to continue doing that. One of the things we would like to do is partner with IT and review learning management systems. So may have that with your employer, which is just kind of tracking and implementing learning, like training, and you can track people's kind of progress on those and maybe making a part of the onboarding process. So there's that. Let's see. Yeah, the rest of it's kind of looking at our existing systems and how can we better utilize those, so makes sense. Is there anything, yeah, I mean, the, the actual budget itself is just salaries for those positions, so that's, that one.
That's probably the most straightforward one.
Yeah, it's the, it's the cleanest one and easiest one to get through. If we're ready, I'll move. So the council one, it's, if everyone's this way, it's pretty bare bones. I've made notes on it in case you want to talk about some of the other accounts that are in here. I think you are probably aware of what all's in your budget. There's money in there for legal and financial consulting, money in there for the copier you've got, and then other than that, there is the other account, which was, I had it memorized and I don't. Oh, it's the fee that typically is paid for the State of the City table. That's the, that's what that $500 is. We're breaking the bank on 500 bucks, but just so you know.
Any questions on council, council's budget?
Did we take out our, that allotment that we do, that we've been kind of doing yearly? Did we skip that out this year?
Yeah, well, with, with how I did, yeah, with how we kind of started the budget, I should probably rewind for everyone. When I looked at the budget, what we did was we started with revenue projection, so we wanted to, we want to have a balanced budget, so it's the way to go. Here's what we project. And then I looked at prior year's spend by department in the general fund, and so based off percentage, I just, you multiply it by what you've got coming your way. That's your allocation. That was kind of the starting point. The nice thing about that is it removed any unused spending. It kind of gave you a very clean starting point, and so that's kind of where we ended up here, where really, if you look at the fund financial for the general fund, we don't have really much capital in the budget. It would throw us over, so, yeah.
So really, if you were to, we've been allocated those funds, but haven't used them in a few years, and I think even the 2019 budget, even though they were allocated, they were. were never utilized.
Right.
On those, on those projects.
Probably 19 and then 200,000 and 20. It's one way we built the general fund reserve. When you have a budget item you're not consistently using, it'll help you build your reserves up, but when we're at a point where we've caught up to our revenues and you do that type of, we call like an equitable allocation, it cuts out a lot of the bluff, if you will.
So after, what the process is tonight, after budget's heard in the finance committee, it's going to go to committee as a whole, which will meet on October the 3rd. So this could definitely be an item that, when it gets before the full council, we could discuss where we, what do we want to do with that line, if there's some plans or thoughts for 2023, and exactly what the, is left over at the revenue, if you have a net positive. Maybe, maybe that could be the line for the net positive to go to.
Yeah, so where we came back with the updated, I don't know if you're here, the Marion County estimates came back in. So one of the things we were going to be off, because we didn't, I had the levy appeal 112,000 in the general fund revenue, we were going to be off, so that kind of started to try to figure out what to do. But then I, we went to this, Humphrey and I went to a Marion County all units meeting and got the estimates for the county for the income tax. And that, when I went and updated my revenue numbers for that, it made up the difference. So luckily, so we went from with the 112,000 having a net revenue of 535 to actually having a net revenue of like about 18,000. Yes, technically, there's 18,000 there.
Which is roughly what the council was allocating the past years?
Yeah, it works out.
Any other questions?
Okay, so that is it for me for right now. I'm going to bring up public safety next. I can, we can pause here if you have any other questions for me before I let them take over.
For, for you, okay, yeah, I do, I do have one question. So if I'm reading this correctly, can you hear me? Sorry, I feel like I'm a loud person. Okay, if I'm reading this correctly, this, this budget is slated for just the departments to get a 5% increase, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's great. My question is, if the departments received that, the bonus last year, it may not be perceived as though like it's much difference? So I'm just asking, would the budget possibly support a 3% on top of that, or even 5%, or no? It's just a question.
I have to give a, we've got an attorney on the line, she understands this type of answer. It depends. So it does, it depends on how you want to go about it. There are options, but in the operating funds, you'd have to use your reserves. So it depends if you wanted to go additional 3%. Again, right now in the ARP plan, there's a 5%, talking in the budget workshops, we were going to go for that to allocate towards capital needs. So it just depends, it's really up to you on what you would like to do. I'd have projections on what that situation would look like depending on the route you wanted to go, so we can look at it. But yeah, again, the answer depends. There's a lot of different scenarios. How, how do you want to fund it? If you want it to be in the budget operationally, or if you want that increment, if you will, to be in ARP or?
Since you brought that up, I understand that we could probably fund that on the front end, but just, I've heard some conversation about sustainability after 25.
Yeah, it's a great question.
So, I mean, that's why I'm being more, when I heard that, that is why I'm being conservative, because I don't want to be able to fund something on the front end, and then it's not sustainable because, you know, I guess I'm now kind of an older councilman. When I came into this city, it was in an uproar because a council funded a bunch of stuff that was not sustainable and then had to lay people off, and it's an ugly nightmare trying to put it back together.
Yeah, you're correct. So yes, we can look at it. I have five different scenarios. I can pull them up right now if it's something we wanted to dive into, or if it was a conversation for another day. But I can pull it up and give you five different scenarios of what that would look like, because sustainability is important. I have those going out to 25, so we can look at them before we get into.
Before we look at them, are there sustainability issues with those options?
Some, because again, the situation would depend on what route you went. So there are sustainability issues and depending.
There's never an issue with a balanced budget.
Obviously, yeah, yeah, of course. So yes, I will say, it's a great point. So depends on the scenario, and again, multiple factors. So, you know, we've got a 20% target, we want to, oh, just trying to get in here. So yes, it depends. If we have the 20% target, in some scenarios, it would push you below the 20% target. How hard are we going to be on the 20%? Different things like that.
And I just keep throwing these factors of why I have the thought process. We get too far, well, I'll ask this question. How far below the 20% reserve threshold does our credit rating start to get affected?
That's a really good question. That's one I, I don't think I can answer.
Because we had to build the reserve up before to get up to, because when I came in, we had a terrible credit rating. I see people in the room nodding their head, so I'm like, you sure I'm not crazy? And we had to up it to get the AAA, we started bragging about that, right? Now we went out and got a lot of good bonds at a good rate.
Yep.
And so that's my fear, and I'm sorry, but you know, and then that all trickles down, and then we can't go build as good as we want, maybe as well as we'd like to, because now the mayor's going up to Chicago and begging people, and those are all the things that Finley and them had to do to get us here.
Yeah, we don't want to, you know, put us in a bad situation. So again, depending on the scenario, the end result will differ. To that point, you do want to maintain at least 15%. And so with the reserves and the general fund, what that is, is because it's your major operating fund, you don't ever want that to go negative throughout the year. So given the cash flow situation, you get your property taxes, you don't get them until June and December, so you have to start the year with so much, and you eat away at it until your property tax comes in, you reset, you eat away, and then you end with a nice bump. You don't, you can't go negative. So by having good reserves, you start the year where you don't need to worry about tax anticipation notes, and that's where we start to get into the credit situation. Again, you know, that's why we set the 20% target.
I'm just saying, it makes your job a lot easier if you just stay balanced, you just don't have to worry about all that other stuff possibly occurring.
But one of the things you mentioned is also the ARP support, so it could be supported, Lauren, or Councilor Russell's question, by moving perhaps a capital project or reducing a potential capital project on that ARP that we've set aside.
So yes, so I have five different scenarios that we want to look, it sounds like we want to look at them. So I have, I have pronounced, and I've got, I've got the PDFs here, I can pull them up.
Then let me ask, if, I just honestly just asked a question, so, and I like the discussion, I really do, I like all of it, we're learning. I especially am, it's my first time on this, you know, so what, if we're going to look at something, since you already have them pulled up, what would be the, like, obviously the balanced budget, I completely agree, you guys have done great work. What would be?
The next best option.
The next best option, yeah, thank you. I didn't get my words right.
Yeah, because we haven't even got to the department head yet.
You don't mind us talking about giving a raise, I don't think.
That's a good question, and I would say, I hate this answer, but again, depends on what you want to do. There are, I have scenarios where we just do the five, and I have it if you did eight, and then again, 10. So I've got those laid out. Obviously, the more you give, the worse your numbers are going to look. That's, that's the obvious given, you know, answer. So you have to look at them and decide which one would you prefer to be in. Obviously, you know, I'm a city employee, so as a fiscal officer, less is better on that bottom dollar, but again, you have to make that judgment call on your end, which one would be the best in your mind. So we can walk through them real quick, it won't take too long, but that way you can see kind of where we project to end in those different scenarios. You want to do that?
So I'm torn with, just because of time. So walk through them really quick, and then what I would like to hear, you have emergency service next.
We've got all public safeties next.
Public safety next. So I'd then like to hear maybe the competitiveness of where our salaries are currently from public safety, so if you have these just real quick.
Thank you.
Councilor Whitfield, he, do you have these on?
I'm going to pull them up.
Okay. Councilor Whitfield, he passed out a paper copy, but he's going to pull up what he gave us online.
Thank you, and if you have a PDF, if you can mail it out to my email, I appreciate it.
Okay, so the first page here is what I would call the base scenario, and so I did whip these up pretty quickly, so sorry if they're kind of confusing. But on the first situation is if you did the 5% we have in 23, and assuming just 3% in 24 and 3% in 25, you can see the net revenue moving forward. And so I had that chart on the bottom, that shows you how much above the 20% you are.
Which base scenario are you in?
The first one that says base.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is, yeah.
Gotcha.
So this is kind of what, this is what we would look at if we did the 5% we have proposed right now, and I have, again, I'm assuming more will come in the future, so three and three was just an easy number. I did put in a 3% inflationary factor in the other categories, just to try to be fair and give it a realistic picture. Obviously, with that large of a net revenue in 24 and 25, you'd allocate that towards like a capital project. We've got more than enough needs, but you can fund that scenario. So that's kind of where we are now. If you switch to the next page that has scenario, scenario two, if we put all of the 10%, if we were doing 10%, if we put all that into the 23 proposed budget, not in ARP, but 23 budget, you would run that deficit of 736,000. That would put the 23 proposed budget, it would end slightly above the 20%. Now again, assuming you would have to give more in 24 and 25, I kept the 3% there, because I would, I wouldn't want to assume no raises in the future. So you kind of continued the trend down, where you'd end, I'm at 4.5 million, and that'd be well below the 20%. That is, but that again is if you funded above 5% in the actual budget. So if you flip that page over, sorry, it printed double sided here. Scenario three, sorry, Councilor Whitfield, I'm going to switch. I apologize, I'm going to run through these very quickly, I know there'll be some questions here.
Now you don't find this is.
Scenario three is 10% in 23, but 5% of that's covered in ARP. So obviously for 23, then that budget means exactly what it shows right now. The nice thing is I've actually updated these today, so the revenue numbers are more accurate. So this, this 23 at least to 23, that is a revision. So if you do 5% out of ARP, and keep the 5% in the budget as it stands, you're going to end 23 in the exact same spot. Now, you can sustain that in 24 and 25, but if you look at the assumption at the top, that assumes no raises in 24, but then 3% in 25. So that's kind of a decision you'd have to make.
We've never been able to stick to no raises.
Well, the contract says 3%, doesn't it, the union contract?
24, I'd have to double check. So yeah, this one's already, so the next, just giving you all the scenario.
Right, yeah.
So scenario four.
I'm, I'm sorry, may I ask a quick question before you leave this page? Thank you, Chairman. In regards to the ARP fund, can you kindly remind me how much we have put aside, and when does that ARP fund money is gone?
First question was how much?
How much is set aside? So it was 5%, so 950 something thousand.
Yep. So in the current ARP plan, there's already the 5% in there. We have to allocate that money by 24, and then it needs to be spent by the end of 25. And now they might have moved that out a year, but I need to double check.
Did that answer your question, Councilor Whitfield? You broke up a little bit at the end there.
Yes, so you're telling me we have about 5% put aside, so about 950,000, and we need to use it its entirety by 2025.
It has to be allocated, correct?
Allocated, yeah.
And that's, that's one thing that we had brought up in the budget workshops, was that with the budget having 5% was to take the ARP plan 5% and allocate it towards capital needs. So it's there currently as it stands in there for the 5% raises. I'll jump to the next scenario, number four, I think is more likely.
Yeah.
So, okay, so number four is, back of this page, sorry, guys. All right. 10% in 23, but 5% in ARP. Again, your 23 ends in the same place, but it assumes you do 3% in 2024, because I would assume, assumptions do, but assume you're going to give 3% again in 24 and 25. That, again, uses some reserves. You do go below, and you can see on the chart there, you go below 20% in 2025. So the final one is.
And all of these projections don't include the appeals and the Baker-Tilly recommendations that you're going to attempt?
Well, this is the general fund specifically, it's like the wheel tax wouldn't come into play, the levy, I mean.
A little bit.
Yeah, I mean, the revenue projections, I think, are fairly accurate, but there is opportunity for maybe another 50 to 100,000 potential revenue. Yeah, there's always that, city of our size, that rounding error, you call it. But in scenario five, this is where you did, if you did 8% in 23 with 3% coming from ARP, and then gave 3% in 24, and again, gave 3% more in 25. Now, it's not balanced, but it's pretty close. And if you're talking about rounding errors, that's a rounding error. You do maintain 20%, 20%.
And we also have the 1.5 million in rainy day, so actually you would have.
Well, yeah.
Potentially.
I mean, you're assuming no payouts and.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so.
But the payouts then are covered because that money's in rainy day.
It is to a certain degree. We still have, it's ongoing, so at some point, I will come.
What is that dreadful noise?
I will come back every December to talk about what we might need to fund it in the future. Yeah, that was really loud. Like this year, we had, we've already had about 500,000 payouts, so as long as you don't have three years of that in a row, you'll be okay, but yeah.
So I know it's kind of a courtesy, not something that they have, the folks have to disclose to us, but I've heard in the past, you guys kind of will ask, you know, we got any projections coming up? So I'm assuming you've done that, you've made sure, like you said, the 1.5 is over there, to make sure that we're good, you know, for what we see right in front of us.
Yeah, like, I've got to actually have a report on that. Just as an example, in 20, and this is how it fluctuates so much, in 2020, we spent 95,000, almost 96,000 on payouts. 21, we spent 393,000 in payouts. That was the whole year. In 22, as of August 15th, we spent 452,000. So it's ramping up, but you can tell that it fluctuates. So yeah, it is hard to gauge. 1.5 million is helpful, as long as you don't continue to have this. We are seeing, what I do, what I like to do in the report that I get, I have a total of everyone's kind of payout at time, like a little snapshot of it. I will put their ages in and kind of guesstimate, but again, it's pretty hard to be perfectly accurate on that. We do ask.
That was the question I had, is do you guesstimate from when they started and when they're kind of eligible for retirement? And I also heard, it was just, we had some people came in at like large classes, so there'd be like a good chunk of folks that'll be eligible here in the next two years, I thought I was.
Classes, you mean just like bulk of new hires and?
We hired a bunch of folks 25 years ago, whatever the retirement age is.
Oh, like there, there are times coming?
Right.
Yeah, I would have to double check the ages on that, but yeah, these next few years, we're going to start, we'll probably see more retirements. I mean, if this trend continues, you're all in that route. It does then kind of fall down, because after a certain point.
Right.
Yeah. So it's just something that we'll have to continue to monitor, and you'll have to fund it regularly, which is another reason why it's good to be at or above that 20% margin, because you're going to need to be prepared for unforeseen things. It's another reason why it's good that that capital improvement fund's in a good spot. So I would say that obviously financially, the 5% now with 3% and 3% is going to be the strongest financial position, but make a good point, this is kind of your next best option, I would say. So with this information, at that point, I'd have to defer to you on the judgment call.
Thank you.
Hopefully you've got everything here. If you have any questions on that, we know.
This is really good information.
It looks like we've, I have a time.
No, that's all right. We'll, we'll keep running here for a second, so if the.
Police is up now.
Sean, are you going to call your, sorry, it's Chris, are you going to call your meeting order formally? Or do you even need to at this late point?
We've been a little bit, I was going to actually do that before we voted, but I can, let me see here, a good question. What is, if we go a little bit over, is that harmful in any way? Or issues?
Not, not legally.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and formally call the, the meeting to order as we begin to hear pub, from public safety.
Police first, but if you really think you guys.
Thank you, Chris, for that reminder.
Well, thank you, councilors. On the police side, Gary Woodruff, by the way, Chief of Police. Um, in the big picture, we would, certainly our accomplishments and objectives are, are there for you to, for you to read. And we're certainly grateful we can be back in the community out there, uh, you know, meeting with, uh, doing our events that we thoroughly enjoy doing, we weren't able to do during the COVID period. But again, the big picture, based on what you were just talking about a few minutes ago, you know, largely our budget doesn't change from year to year. But, uh, you know, within the reasonable fiscal responsibility, we think the focus needs to be on our people and making sure that we're getting, uh, getting the resources that they need for us to remain competitive, not only with talent retention, but with, uh, as a downstream effect for, with, with recruitment also. Uh, we're shorthanded currently, just like every other police department is in the entire country. We're allocated for 65. We're operating with 57 right now. And, uh, there's no specific reason for that other than retirements. And, uh, we have a hiring process. It's getting ready to kick off here in October, we believe. We're working vigorously on that. But, uh, you know, every year that, that a raise is, a good raise is not given, we're falling that much further behind with these other entities that we're competing against, uh, that are giving raises. And it makes it, makes it very difficult to not only retain talent, but, uh, to recruit that, uh, that talent pool that we want now, including the diversity that we, that we're all seeking within our police department. So, uh, in the overall, our, our budget hasn't really changed all that, all that drastically. I know we're not really on communications, but I would point out to you that our telecommunications currently are paid $37,000 a year. Uh, I'd like to think we can do better than that. Um, you know, use the analogy that you've turned the, the light switch on and, uh, you just expect the lights to come on, right? Uh, you, you turn on the water faucet and you expect the water to flow. You call 911, you expect somebody's going to be on the other end to answer it. And, uh, that's a thankless job. And you need to, uh, need to take care of our people there in the communication center, really the entire public safety family, I would submit. And, and we appreciate the investment you've already made. 80% of the city's budget goes to public safety. Not lost on any of us, I don't believe. But, but in the overall, I know we're short on time here, but in the overall, that's, uh, that's what I wanted to kind of make a point of emphasis on. Thanks for your attention to that also, to, to your point and to Counselor Russell's point as well. Thank you.
Chief Woodruff, when you say, um, communications, you don't mean somebody calling into the building on the phone. You're talking about 911 dispatch.
Our communication center, yes. Yeah, yeah. On average, uh, the staff there is, is paid, you know, about 37,000 a year. And, uh, and we have, we have 15, you know, hard work, allocated for 15 hardworking people down there. We could use more people, but, uh, in addition to that, they could, they could use a, a nice, a nice salary bump as well.
That's a question. 37,000 is what we're paying. What are they paying down? Because there's only, I assumed, I thought I learned correctly. If I'm wrong, there's only two 911 centers in the county, right? It's us and, and downtown.
Us in downtown, if you, if you include the airport in that also, which is, which is technically in Hendricks County, but serves a large majority of.
They get a lot of federal money, though. You know what I mean? Let's talk about the county guys.
But Speedway has its own, uh, public safety answering port as well.
I didn't know that.
Yes. Yeah, Speedway maintained theirs, downtown, and then ours. We are the primary backup to downtown. If they have a catastrophic failure downtown, our phones immediately start ringing, uh, with their traffic and then our, our, we answer that radio traffic.
What's the comparison in the pays between?
That's a great question. Um, Leanne, do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
Maybe that would be good information out of the, October.
Yeah, I can, I can do, I can get that specific research for you. Yeah, I can certainly get that specific research for you and compare.
And they're not a part of any of your union contracts as well.
You know, did you just mention? Marion County, we believe, unionized.
But we're not.
We're not.
Right. I heard that recently.
Correct. So, uh, anyway.
So that might be something, collective bargaining might be something for those people to consider.
And that was the big picture that I just wanted to share with you, that, that focus on our staff, uh, focus on citywide, but especially the, your public safety staff.
I have some friends in 911 downtown that let me know that they were unionized. Thank you.
That's a good thing. That's a, that's a tough job, as we well know. And, uh, the whole public safety family, uh, we're grateful for that.
40,000. She just Googled 40. We're at 37.
Right on. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll hear our Chief Talis real quick and then try to move this along.
Yeah, and I just wanted to briefly cover, Tyler talked about, the controller talked about the debt service. Um, one of the big things for us, a lot of our debt service for the fire and EMS is going to fall off in '24, like mid-'24, June to the fall. Um, we came into this in 2016 where everything had to be replaced at once. We didn't have anything that was new. Everything was old. So what, what's happened between our budget and the additional appropriations is that we've taken some care of some things that it started with Benwick, uh, Jason Fenwick, and it's continued with Tyler, where we have a replacement plan. So hopefully, we will never be in a position again where everything has to be replaced at one time. So some of the things that are, that we accomplished that take us down the road, air packs are good about 10 to 12 years. We did, did that about two and a half, three years ago. We're good for 10 or 12 years. The, um, ambulances and fire apparatus, um, we have, uh, I said, have a plan now to, to put those things in a, in a rotation order where we should never get in that, that position again. Heart monitors, we just took care of a deal here recently that's going to take us down 10 years. Five years from now, they will replace all the heart monitors that are on the fire apparatus and the ambulances with either new technology or new computers. So that's staying here for 10 years. So there's a lot of things that have taken place that are not every year expenditures, but you just have to have the up-to-date equipment to service our, um, to service our citizens the, the way they're used to. Just to give you an idea what some of these cost, um, a ladder we ordered back in 2017 was 935,000. That same exact ladder today is 1.381.
Wow.
Just in five years. That's what the cost had done. I talked to the Speedway chief today, a fire engine, they specked out that was not just a bunch of bells and whistles on, it was 800,000 for a fire engine, where several years ago, you were paying 230, 250,000 for a fire engine. So steel prices, the COVID, everything combined, it's just, you know, ambulance, uh, right now is running about $280,000. I never thought we would ever see that happen. So that's a lot, that's a lot of money. Now.
So you're feeling the same price increases?
Yes.
Personal, family households?
Right. And then, you know, we also, just like the police department, we have to try to make sure we take care of our people. And we don't want Lawrence, in any departments, especially public safety, to be a stepping stone. We, both departments, police and fire, have tremendous training opportunities. And if they're trying to be a firefighter, police officer, or get into medical profession, Lawrence, there's all types of runs here. A person that gets very well trained here, we don't want to be a stepping stone for anybody else in the county or even outside the county. We want to retain those good people, and we have to take care of those people when, when we, when we get them. Uh, we don't want them looking anywhere else. We, we get them, we train them, we want to, we want, trying to retain, we try to retain those people. And I think that, um, we're light years ahead, this entire city with everybody's help, that's the council included. I mean, if you look back where we were seven years ago, it, this is not even the same place. It's just, it's just not. And that's all the departments, that's the city, that's the citizens, that's the livelihood, people that visit here. I mean, this, uh, this city has just taken off. And but it takes everybody to do it. It's not just one department, a couple people, or just the mayor. It takes everybody to, to make that happen. And I think everybody that works for the city can take, take, uh, applause for that because it, it does, it takes everyone to, to make that happen. And I will entertain any questions. There's a, I know there were some accomplishment objectives. Um, the big thing was Station 38, um, and they're well, we're completely on schedule with that, and that's pretty exciting. Um, I just want to clarify one thing. Um, I got to ask a couple of questions. That building that's, that's sitting there that's almost done is not the fire station. That is, uh, to house our reserve apparatus that we never had before. And, uh, that was, that was introduced when we did the initial proposal. I had a couple of calls that went and went, well, that's an extra building and we're going to go over budget. That was included at the very onset. So that, all that was included in that, in that pricing.
Thank you. And I think, uh, we've gone a little bit over time. And I know on October 3rd, we're going to have a committee of the whole again. So I would ask all of the department heads if you could come back on October the 3rd so that then the full council could view or, or speak with you and answer questions then. And I would ask our, our fellow council members to perhaps to watch the video from tonight. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yeah, I, I need to take a vote and then we'll close it. We got to recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor, um, so you want them to hear it in this meeting or recommend it on to the full council? Because we have to recommend these to the full council to have the public hearing, correct? Okay. So since the department heads are here, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then we'll start the council meeting so that that way we're still within the schedule that we gave public notice for. So with that, I'll adjourn, uh, the finance committee meeting. Thank you.